Dice Man with Burnt Hickory Church, if you're here, please come forward. If not, we'll have a moment of silence and that will be followed by the pledge which I will also leave. For those of you willing, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now rise for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our meeting is now called to order. I will turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson, and he is going to help walk us through today's agenda.
Thank you, Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When the case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise your hand so they can be counted for the official record. Then, after recognizing both parties, the applicant will be asked to come forward to present their case. And then the opposition, if any, will be asked to come forward to present their side also. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information twice. After that, the board will start to discuss the matter at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are three cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-55 of 2022, Kenneth B. Clary. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Next case is resounding case Z-14 of 2023, Brand Properties LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. And last case to be withdrawn is LUP-12 of 2023, Carla A. Garcia. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been held or continued by the staff of the planning commission, and these following cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-60 of 2022, Branch Acquisition Company LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-67 of 2022, SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-67 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-9 of 2023, Argus Viva Central Millera de Edición Inc. This case was held by the planning commission until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-9 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-12 of 2023, Fernando Chavera. This case was continued by the staff until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-12 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-13 of 2023, Matthew C. Flonoy. This case was continued by the planning commission until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-13 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-15 of 2023, SDP Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-15 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-18 of 2023, Icon Renovations LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-18 will not be heard today. LUP-11 of 2023, Rick Coleman. This case was held by the planning commission until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LUP-11 of 2023 will not be heard today. And finally, SLEP-6 of 2023, Clarkdale Ventures LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP-6 of 2023 will not be heard today. I would like to ask people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off on your cellphone as the ringing does interfere with the broadcast and the presentations. And I would remind any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners, if they made a campaign contribution totaling $250 more to a current member of the Board of Commissioners, they must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they've done it within the last two years. Additional information about this requirement is located in the back of the room. And finally, I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information was due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted to the board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
All righty, let's go. I may get some cases to add. We'll do that just then.
Well, no, we have a request to withdraw Z-8 that we need to pass for withdrawal first, don't we? Before consent?
I follow John.
Before consent?
Yeah, we can go do that right now.
Okay.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Hough, Sam Zarkin Huff, and we submitted a letter yesterday requesting to withdraw Z-8 without prejudice, and I do want to publicly thank the Commissioner for working with us through this process. Unfortunately, there were some contractual and development issues that didn't allow my client to move forward. Also want to thank, a couple of people are here with the community, Carol Brown, John Nash, had worked with us on the House. So want to just thank them for their efforts, and unfortunately, we have to withdraw the case, and we ask it to be withdrawn without prejudice so the property can be left in its current situation to be able to, for someone else to potentially work with it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. And before I make a motion, I too would like to thank Mr. Parks and his client for working with us in the community groups and other nonprofits to see how we could preserve the McAfee House. And also have submitted my statement for the record to the clerk. And I just want to say that, you know, something could go there in the future. The client was very agreeable to working with the nonprofits, the community groups, to try to preserve this, whether it be restored and stay on site, or moved to a historic location and become listed on the historic register. So I think those efforts can be ongoing while we're, while this has been withdrawn. Hopefully, we'll get another developer that will be as cooperative and work with us. So with that, I make a motion to withdraw Z-8 without prejudice.
Okay, is there a second? Second? Any discussion? Commissioner Gamble.
Just if the clerk can please record my statement. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Richardson being absent. All right, John.
Okay, and I just want to clarify one thing before we get going on the consent agenda, Madam Chair. I just want to verify with the clerk that the first case I read to be held or continued, Z-60 of 2022, Branch Acquisition Company, that was continued by the staff until the July 5th, 2023 Planning Commission's zoning hearing. All right, thank you. All right, with that, Madam Chair, Board, we're ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay.
And we're going to make one change to consent agenda. There is someone here opposed to other business item number 25, so we're going to pull that off, consent, and put it in its regular order, and that's in District 1. So I'm going to read every case except for OB-25.
All right, just give me one more. Other business item 25.
Okay, Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for June 20th, 2023. First case on consent is resounding case Z-16, Toys and Gift Delivery Incorporated, request a rezoning from ONI to NRC for a bakery in Land Lot 595 of the 16th District. Property is located on the west side of Sandy Plains Road, north of Piedmont Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-16 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on March 31st, 2023, with the district commissioner approved minor modifications. Number two, variances as stated in the zoning division comments and recommendations. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. Number four, county arborist comments and recommendations. Number five, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number six, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-16? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Excuse me, I have something to add. I would like to add a stip that this is approved for this use only and any other use to be approved by the district commissioner. Is the applicant good with that?
Okay.
Yes.
Applicant has a thumbs up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next case on consent is LUP-9, Patricia Deverger. Request a temporary land use permit renewal for allowance of a childcare learning center in Land Lot 631 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Crest Ridge Circle, south of Crest Ridge Drive. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP-9 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of 10 children. Number two, two employees. And number three, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP-9? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that's unamended consent agenda.
Pardon me, John, if I can just, Madam Chair, if I may add, to add to consent the following conditions, that outdoor toys are to be placed in the storage bins outside of hours of operation. And, John, the work hours, I'm sorry, the hours of operation is already noted for the record.
Yes, I believe it's in her application.
Okay, all right. All right, just wanted to confirm, I'm looking at that here, but I just wanted to make clear that it was. And all staff recommendations and comments, not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant amenable to the additional condition? Are you, yes, ma'am, are you okay with the additional stipulation that she added? I can't, ma'am, if you can come forward, I'm sorry, I can't see you. Good morning.
Patricia Deverger, owner of Tana Tana University.
Thank you, Patricia. Are you okay with the additional condition that the commissioner read into the statement?
Oh, I'm okay with that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, last unamended consent is LUP-10, Young S. Yutash, request a temporary land use permit renewal for allowing of clothing alterations and bridal gown sales in Land Lot 126 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Kimberly Road, north of Old 41 Highway. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP-10 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum number of truck deliveries to be two per day. And number two, maximum number of customers to be no more than three per day, and by appointment only. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LUP-10, Young S. Yutash? She is not present, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay, Commissioner, what would you like to do? Commissioner Gamble?
I'm sorry, the applicant's not here?
That's correct.
Have we, have we called her? Did she know she was supposed to be here today?
She does know she's supposed to be here today. We can try to give her a call and have her come in before the hearing ends, or, you know, if the board wants to, the board could just leave it on consent and just vote on it.
Is there anyone here in opposition to LUP-10?
And actually, this is going to be the third renewal for this LUP, and it never has had any opposition, and I don't believe, is code enforcement here? I know in our, our application, I've not had any code enforcement complaints, so I would be okay with having it left on consent.
Okay. We'll keep it on consent. Thank you.
And that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board, with OB-25 being left off, putting it in its regular order.
Okay, are there any additional changes? Yes, Commissioner? Madam Chair, I'd like to add OB-27 to the consent agenda. John, if you can share how the staff recommends?
Let me go ahead and read that into the record.
Okay, okay.
OB number 27 of 2023 is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for D.R. Horton Incorporated regarding rezoning application Z-9 of 2019 in Land Lots 413 and 476 of the 19th District. Property is located on the southeastward side of Powder Springs Road and on the northeastward side of Brandon Lee Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 27? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board approve this, subject to the revised site plan contained in the other business packet for other business item number 27, subject to Cobb DOT comments, subject to fire department comments, and all previous conditions not in conflict to remain in effect.
Okay. Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion to add OB-27 to the consent agenda. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Are there any other, yes, Commissioner Burrow?
I, I would like to add Z-17 and SLUP-5 to consent with, and asking the applicant to come forward.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read it to the record first. Resounding case Z-17, Caliber Capital Kennesaw LLC, request rezoning from GC to OMR for a hotel in Land Lot 651 of the 16th District. Property is located on the west side of Roberts Court, on the east side of the I-75 exit ramp, south of Ernest Barrett Parkway, together with its companion special land use permit, SLEP-5, Caliber Capital Kennesaw LLC, request a special land use permit for a hotel in Land Lot 651 of the 16th District. Property is located on the west side of Roberts Court, on the east side of the I-75 exit ramp, south of Ernest Barrett Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to either Z-17 or SLEP-5? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay. Mr. Parks, according to the site plan an engineer submitted, the existing two buildings that are vacant, that are there now, are at 90% impervious?
That is correct.
Okay, and the, and it is in Iraq?
Correct.
And there will be underground detention?
Correct.
So I'd ask that you go to 80%, because that's what's allowed by the zoning code, but your, your client is agreeable to 85 max?
That is correct.
85% max?
Yep.
Okay. So I would like to add to the steps maximum 85% impervious. Okay. And all other staff comments and recommendations? And, John?
Pardon my interruption, Mr. Burrow. The way the planning commission approved this is they just approved it to all staff comments and recommendations, but you also make it subject to Mr. Huff's letter? And do you know the date of that?
I, I think there isn't a specific letter, there's my statement of intent in the zoning package.
Okay. Make it subject to Mr. Huff's statement of intent in the zoning package and the planning commission recommendation, at a maximum of 85% impervious.
Right.
Okay.
And this was recommended for approval by planning commission and staff?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Huff.
Okay.
And, well, it's, it's two components because there's a SLUP with it, so do we need to add them separately or together?
We could do it separately.
But then we add it to consent?
Yeah.
Both, okay. Thank you.
So Commissioner, you wanted to add some conditions. Did we have a motion to add this to consent?
I don't know. Did we?
Okay. We need to have a motion.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Z-17 with, pardon? To add Z-17 and SLUP-5 to consent with the following added conditions, maximum impervious of 85% and all staff comments, planning commission comments, not otherwise in conflict.
And so we have both of those being moved at the same time?
I don't know.
Are we okay with that, Bill?
Check with the clerk.
Okay.
And you wanted to include the statement of intent letter also from Mr. Huff?
Yes, from Mr. Huff, that's in the packet. Sorry.
All right.
Second?
All right, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, are there any other additions needed to consent? Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised.
Second?
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
For those of you who've had applications and the consent agenda, we just approved it, you are free to leave at this time unless you are with other business item 25. I'd encourage you to stay so we can hear that case during the latter part of today's meeting. Or you all can stay and watch the rest of the meeting, but again, if you've had any of the three, or multiple approved cases, Z-16, LUP-9, LUP-10, other business item 27, Z-17, or SLUP-5, if you're here with any of those, we will not be deliberating those anymore during this meeting, and you're free to leave at this time. All right, John, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, moving into the continued case agenda that we're going to hear today, first case we're going to hear is rezoning case Z-65 of 2022, Dray Pack Investments LLC, request rezoning from RA5 to RA5 for a single-family attached and detached subdivision in Land Lots 87 and 88 of the 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Michael Road, south of Vanessa Circle, at the terminus of Linda Drive and at the terminus of Oak Hill Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-65? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Parks Hough of the law firm, Sam Zarkin Huff, and I represent Dray Pack in relation to this application before you this morning. I'm pleased that no one's here in opposition because we have worked with the community and made significant adjustments to the plan so that the community is reasonably satisfied with the proposal, as shown by the fact that no one's here in opposition. So I will make an amended presentation. I think there's some specific questions the Commissioner has, and we'll be glad to address those. This is a property that was zoned RA5 many years ago and has never developed, and when my client acquired the property and started looking at different development options, there are two different ways that the property is accessed from adjacent subdivision streets existing, and they had a proposal that was going, and this shows through the site plan here, you can see here that you can come in from the south off of Oak Hill Drive, but also there's, Linda Drive has an extension from the east of the subject property that comes into the site. This is, again, showing the site is zoned RA5, and the staff has reviewed the application and recommended approval of the application as we presented it, and also the planning commission recommended approval of the application. This was the previous site plan that we started with, and it shows access from the south. We have some architectural renderings contained in my stipulation letter dated May 18th regarding this proposal, but we think that with the conditions contained in the staff recommendation with my letter of group of stipulation dated, that dated May 18th, we are now only talking about 59 homes at a density of 3.24 units per acre, and this is a, the proposal at one time had attached units, this is all detached product now, and so this is going to add a new detached community in South Cobb that will be accessed through an existing community. The DOT comments and, and recommendations we're good with, with the only exception being that when the comment was made at the, that we would repair roads that we use and access, and the way it's stated right now is we would repave all the roads, we just need it to be limited to the roads that are damaged by our construction. That would be done prior to obtaining the final CO. And so this is a proposal that is consistent with your land use plan, consistent with your staff recommendation, consistent with your planning commission recommendation. We ask that you follow all that and the fact that no one's here in opposition and speaks volumes. So appreciate your time, consideration, and I would reserve my time to answer specific questions that the Commissioner might have.
Thank you. All right. Just want to check and make sure there's no one here to speak towards this application. All right, I'll turn things over. The Commissioner will call you back up if needed. Okay, she's asking you to stay, Parks. She's asking you to stay, Parks. Stay right there.
I thought, I thought she would.
I just want to confirm if the roads are public or private?
The, the roads will be public roads.
They will be public?
Yes.
Okay, because otherwise I would have needed to address an item in your letter, but that's fine. When does the HOA plant, I'm sorry, the developer?
When does the HOA plan, I'm sorry, the developer plans to turn the HOA over to the community? Do you know?
I don't know, but usually, they actually normally have it that until the last lot is sold to an individual buyer, that's ninety-five percent of the covenants I read have it, that it's turned over at the final sale.
Okay. And this is a question for legal, Bill. So without stipulation of having a max of ten percent rentals, can I request that that's added in the CCNRs or just read that as a condition?
You're talking about added into like the homeowner association agreement?
Right, because what I'm finding, when we, when we include this in the condition, the developers are going beyond the ten percent, so I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can hold true to this stipulation. So I wanted to find out from you if we can, as a board or as a commissioner, add that to their covenants.
Well, you could ask for them to be able to do that, so to be title restricted based upon the, all of them being members of the homeowner association.
But we could not mandate, is what I'm getting at?
Correct.
We could not mandate that they include it. Okay, all right. Okay, that's all I have for Parks unless anyone else has a question?
I do have one additional question for clarification. In the packet, they're both attached in detached homes, so you're providing that all will be detached?
All will be detached homes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. DOT?
Hey, Leah. How are you?
Good morning, Leah. I'm DOT.
A question, with respect to the repairs for the road, and you and I talked, I think, on Thursday or Friday of last week, but regarding the repairs, what's the typical timeframe from, I guess, completion of the development up until when the roads need to be repaired?
That is a good question. I don't have an answer right now for that. I would think within six months is reasonable, but I will have to confirm that with thirteen.
Okay. And also, in your comments, in DOT comments, there were several references to a plan that was, that you received on April twentieth. Can you confirm that that is the updated plan dated April fourteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
It is? Okay, it's the same plan, okay. Let me see if I have, okay, that's all I have for DOT, if anyone else has any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. And John, I'll ask you regarding the repairs, what have you seen to be standard?
When the board has required us, we've seen the board put a condition in that Cobb DOT go out and photograph the roads before the construction starts so we know where they are?
Right.
And then the repair should be done within sixty days.
Sixty days, okay.
Sixty days of, from when?
It should be done within sixty days of the approval of the final plat.
Okay.
Because they should be done with construction by that point in time.
Okay, sixty days from approval of the final plat?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, I do have another question for Leah, if you wouldn't mind. Can you confirm the roads, the construction access?
Yes, ma'am. And I know there was a question because I had left, by mistake, the previous roads that were touched by the developer, but in this case, it will be Pine Crest Road, Brenda Drive, Linda Drive, and Michael Road.
I'm sorry, can you just slow down? Because I'm going to include this.
Sure.
Pine Crest Road?
Pine Crest Road, Brenda Drive.
Brenda, I'm sorry.
Brenda, yes.
I'm trying to find that on here. Brenda Drive?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Linda Drive.
Okay.
And Michael Road.
And Michael?
Yes, Michael Road.
Okay, thank you. So construction vehicles and equipment will travel on Pine Crest Road, Brenda Drive, Linda Drive, and Michael Road?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Carl, I have a couple of questions. Do you guys have anything with DOT? No? Okay.
Carl Carver, can he storm water?
Thank you, Carl. In stormwater comments, there's a mention that an off-site easement will be required. An off-site easement will be required, you have in stormwater comments? Does that sound familiar to you?
That didn't, that doesn't sound familiar at this time, but it depends on where they're discharging their stormwater management, and if they're discharging at a location where there's not an existing easement, but based on this new site plan, I think they're going to be discharging into the adjacent floodplain.
Okay.
So that probably will not be required at time of plan review.
It, can you repeat that last?
It probably will not be required at time of plan review.
Okay. All right, fantastic. And also, there was a comment that, that there would be a fee in lieu if it's not available. What happens in that case if it's not?
They provide onsite stormwater management.
Okay. That's all I have for Carl, if you guys have anything.
Nothing.
Okay. Okay.
I have one question. What is the maximum number of units now with them being detached?
With them being detached, I'll tell you. Where are my notes?
I believe it's sixty-three.
Sixty-three?
Sixty-three, and they're asking for fifty-nine?
I thought I heard Parks, yeah, I thought I heard Parks say fifty-nine.
Paragraph number three in the stip letter, fifty-nine, detached single-family homes.
But, but the original plan had sixty-three approved homes, Parks?
What's that?
The original plan had sixty-three?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, it's been reduced, it's three point two four units per acre. For fifty-nine detached single home. Okay. Parks, we've been at this for a long time, actually. I'm going to read my comments now, I don't have any other questions for you, I actually started this one with Garvis, but this one's been going on for quite some time. I actually met with the community last year to share some site distance concerns regarding the proposed entrance on Oak Hill Drive, with the limited view driving uphill compromise the safety of the residents that live along Oak Hill Drive, so I'm pleased to see that we were able to come to an agreement in that that road will not be used for construction, nor will it be used as a point of ingress or egress for the development, so I'm sure the residents there, along with myself, will breathe a sigh of relief. But it is my hope that the new community, once developed, it continues to give consideration to the residents and the adjacent communities who have lived there for over forty years, so it's a very well-established community. I thank you, applicant, and also for the residents, I don't know if any are here today, but for those who have engaged in the zoning process as well as voiced their concerns at my monthly in-the-zone meetings, I appreciate your participation. And with that, Madam Chair, I am prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
And Parks, I'm not, before I do that, Parks, I, I sent an email, a text message to you on yesterday regarding some items that I was going to read into the record, I'm not, I didn't receive a response from you, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, the, the only comment-
With the elevations.
Was the, the architectural, we would just want the district commissioner approve final architecture. I know you talked about some percentages of brick and stone, I'm hesitant to agree to a specific percentage because, you know, if it's fifty percent, it, it may look awkward, it may, forty may be better on some floor plans than, and sixty may be better on others, so I'd prefer it to have some flexibility on percentages of siding material. Everything will be hardy or cementous siding, but brick and stone, I'd like to not have a specific percentage, but district commissioner approving the final architecture.
But I think we still need to go on the record to have some percentage, because for the elevations that were submitted in your stipulation letter, you also indicate that it will be substantially similar to-
Yep.
-those elevations, which, you know, you and I've had discussions, and you are aware of how I feel about those elevations, so.
Yep.
Going in, I still, for the record, would like to have some degree, I'm just now thinking now how to word that. Bill, do you have a recommendation?
You have someone from the board that might have.
You can always stipulate it that with architectural features to be approved by the district commissioner. That way, it would give Parks the flexibility, but then it gives you the ability to approve the architectural feature that is then on each home.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have that all approved, but for me, when I hear architectural feature, I'm thinking more of the fixture of the light, not necessarily the material.
Well, actually, could we have John define that then? Because I, I was always under the assumption that architectural feature meant the brick, the stone?
The materials.
The materials.
You know, for me, the easiest thing to do is just, just stipulate the percentage of brick. If you want fifty percent brick, then just say fifty percent brick or stone.
Mm-hmm.
And then hardy plank shake and so on, as far as the exterior materials. You also may want to address what you want on the side of the house too, because a lot of the times, the front will look real good, and the side is just plain hardy, hardy plank all the way to the side.
Yep, I have that on here.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thanks, Park.
You can be as frank as you have been, if you want to stipulate the materials, et cetera, you can just state that in your stipulations.
And I'll, yeah, just so that there's-
Well, usually the architectural style with combination of bricks, stone, stuff, whatever.
Yeah, but, okay, all right, all right, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make my motion. I make a motion to approve Z sixty-five based on the following conditions: that the detention pond is to have a six-foot vinyl-clad black fence around its perimeter with landscaping around the perimeter of the detention pond to provide a visual buffer. Revision to stipulation number four of Parks Huff's stipulation letter dated May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to reflect that the architectural style and composition are to be a minimum of fifty percent brick and/or stacked stone with a five-foot water table on the sides of the buildings, and final elevations are to be approved by the district commissioner. Revision to stipulation number eleven of Parks Huff's stipulation letter dated May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to reflect that the landscape plan also includes landscaping for the detention pond. Construction traffic access roads are limited to Pine Crest Road, Brenda Drive, Linda Drive, and Michael Road. The developer will repair any roads that are damaged by construction. DOT will take photos before and after construction to determine which roads and to what degree repairs are to be made. The repairs are to be made sixty days from approval of the final plat. Construction days are to be Monday through Friday from seven AM to seven PM, Saturday from eight AM to seven PM, and no construction on Sundays, and lastly, all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, next case is rezoning case Z eleven, Jose Luis Cardenas, request rezoning from GC to NRC for bakery in Land Lot thirty-four, the eighteenth district. The property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Veterans Memorial Highway and Powell Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z eleven? We got three. Let the record show there's three people here in opposition. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Thank you. And John, Z eight, did we move? Oh, we withdrew it, I forgot to cross that out. Thank you.
My name is Gesuri Lopez, and I am with the project for the Christians Bakery Expansion. We are trying to build a storage space towards the back of the bakery due to our limited space inside the bakery. For right now, we have storage bins in the, in the, in the back part of the bakery, and that just gives a bad image to our customers and our community, and that's the reason why we are asking to build a storage space towards the back of the bakery.
Thank you. Okay, excuse me, sir, may you please come back to the mic? Thank you. May you restate your name for the record, please?
Gesuri Lopez.
What's your first name?
Gesuri, G-E-S-S-U-R-I.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone here to speak in support of this application? All right, not seeing any, we'll have opposition, and just be mindful that there are others here to speak in opposition as well.
Yes, my name's Steve Young with the Mapleton Improvement Coalition. Actually, in general, we are supportive of this application, we just would request a few stipulations be added. Number one is we'd like the parking lot to be repaired, and we understand it's been restripped, but it needs to be resealed and, and some potholes filled in, so we'd like the parking lot improved. We'd like the windows improved, either with interior blinds or exterior shutters or decal or something to block the cabinet that's blocking the window right now. I'd like the building repainted, and any additions that are added to this building, we'd prefer them to be the same colors, to give it a nice, uniform, clean look. No outside storage of materials that should be contained in the building and the dumpster being closed, and any trash that's taken out there should be inside that enclosure. Parking should be for customers only, or employees only, and delivery vehicles, no external vehicle should be stored on the, on the premises. And then, of course, prohibited uses such as adult entertainment, liquor stores, et cetera, et cetera, that we've had in previous applications as well. We understand a number of these conditions are already in the process, so we're happy about that, we'd just like them read into the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker. All right, seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Commissioner, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Lopez, may you, can you approach? What is your relationship to the owner?
We're close friends.
Okay, because I spoke with his son when I visited the restaurant, uh, bakery-
That's correct.
But I wasn't sure if that was you-
That's correct, that's me.
And I just wanted to, okay, okay. But Mr. Cardenas is not with us here.
No, not at the moment, yeah, he couldn't make it.
Okay.
But if I have a moment, for all the revised things that they require us to fix, we have fixed the parking lot and restripped the parking lot.
Yeah, I've visited the property, so I'm very, very aware, but thank you, that's all I had. Did you guys have any questions for him? No, okay, all right, that's it, thank you. So it was, as it has been stated, work is already started at the location and it looks fantastic. I stopped in maybe about a month or so, maybe two months ago, and I spoke with the owner at that time and just kind of pointed some things out to him of what I would like to see, and he was very proactive in getting those things done. So I'm really appreciative of his action and his work there. But what it demonstrates to me is the care and the attention that has been given to the business, to the bakery, and also to the owner's investment in our community. The improvements look fantastic, and if you can just relay to the owner that I wish him success in his endeavors. And I stopped by this past Saturday to say hello and purchase a bakery, a pastry, and it was delicious, so I will definitely be back there to support his business. But with that, Madam Chair, I am prepared to make a motion. I make a motion to approve Z eleven based on the following conditions: that the parking lot is repaired, resealed, and restripped no later than October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three; improve the look of the front and side windows of the building with interior and/or exterior shutters, interior blinds, or the exterior decals shown at the June sixth planning commission hearing. If decals are used, they will be required to be replaced once faded or worn, and they are to be replaced with new decals or with exterior shutters or interior blinds. Any addition to the building is to be painted the same color as the existing building within thirty days of the addition of the building. If the addition is already in place, the addition is to be painted no later than July twentieth, twenty twenty-three. No outside storage, including around the dumpster, or the exterior of the enclosure. The dumpster is to remain in the enclosure when not being emptied, and the enclosure doors are to remain closed when not in use. Remove the prior pole sign no later than October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Parking is for employees, customers, and delivery vehicles only. No other business shall be conducted on the property. And please include the prohibited uses as noted. Adult entertainment, establishments that sell sexually explicit or drug-related items and merchandise, liquor stores, smoke and vape shops, pawn and title pawn shops, gold or precious metal dealers, video arcades as a primary use, check cashing businesses, discount sales, new auto sales, auto parts, auto service, and used tire sales, taxi dispatching services, wholesale-only establishments, gun knife weapon sales or shooting ranges, thrift stores, secondhand stores, or flea markets, and all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. That's my motion. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, next case on the agenda is S L E P four, Ray Murphy, who requests a special land use permit renewal for an automobile storage yard and wrecker service for damaged or confiscated vehicles in Land Lots one fifty-four, one fifty-five of the seventeenth district. The property is located at the northwest, on the northwest side of Ostel Road at the terminus of Ostel Circle. The applicant is present, is there anyone here opposed to S L E P four? Let the director show there's no one opposed?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Vicki Murphy Norris, and I'm representing my dad, Ray Murphy. He would love to be here today, however, he was in a very serious accident. And threw a little curveball into our application here. He was sent to Grady's Trauma Center, and he's doing okay right now. My application's been very difficult, long and drawn out. I was here a year ago with a rezoning and a SLUP application. It's for towing and wrecker service on Ostel Road. Yes, it's a main corridor from Veterans Memorial to South Cup Drive. It's, business has been there for thirty-seven years, and some of the lot and the surrounding of the lot is in disarray. The fence was going to be replaced before we were told to halt all of our improvements until we came up in front of you guys.
Ma'am, may you either speak a little bit louder or come closer to the mic? I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to take you through a little bit of my last endeavor with the application. We had code enforcement that brought us here originally for the rezoning and the SLUP. Many, many, many code violations that Ms. Foster helped us get through and improve on. We had several different things that needed to be improved upon, and we did. Now, code enforcement goes on a regular basis and has found trash and some overgrown weeds recently. And the tenant has done his best in keeping up and making sure the property's clean. I was asked to get a landscaping buffer plan in place. I was asked to have a hardened surface and a parking plan for a wrecker and towing service. Originally, with the landscape buffer plan, we did have the fence ready to go. Half of the materials are already there. I have just some things to flip through to show where we started, and I have diligently been working and putting everything that I need to put on a landscape and buffer plan, however, none of it was, would suffice for the county. Got advised to have a landscape architect, and that's what we did. Landscape, that is just, that's just the beginning, if you want to just flip through those. That is a year ago versus now. I sent in several packets that were similar to this. Now, when I look at the hardened surface, it's a two-acre lot, and part of the millings have been put down, and they are appropriate, and it's a hardened surface. The other areas, we have been told to hold out on because of the impervious surface. If we pave the entire lot, it will create a major problem. We will have to put in a fifty to a hundred thousand dollar detention pond. We are committed to do the fencing. We've been given a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar quote on that. The landscape and buffer plan that I have in your packet, here's my original one. The original one was going to be between thirty, I think I put this in your packet, between thirty and forty thousand, just for the landscaping around without irrigation. The fencing, twenty to twenty-five thousand. Then possibly a detention pond, fifty to a hundred thousand. I simply cannot and do not have the funds financially to invest in this piece of property. The architect advised me to maybe make a presentation with the fence would be eight foot on all three sides and then six foot across the front. And if we make plantings, just trees or shrubs or what is allowed on the county code, the fence is going to be eight foot, the trees need to be six foot in two years. So there's a lot of expense going into this where the fence is going to be a visual barrier anyway. So my architect did one other drawing to give me a little bit of a smaller cost. Landscape and buffer, approximately ten thousand for that one. And of course, the fencing added to that. And a detention pond if that's necessary. I simply do not have the money to invest close to a hundred thousand dollars in this property. The fencing is terrible looking as you come down Ostel Road, and that was intended to be replaced months ago. And it will be replaced immediately upon approval. I don't want, code enforcement has helped me through a lot of things, and we really did make big strides. But I don't want really and truly this to be a tit-for-tat for code enforcement. I want to keep up with what we need to keep up with. I do have a letter, or I'm not sure if I put this in your packet, but I wanted to try to read some of this if I can, and don't run out of time here, because I'm not as organized as I used to be because, you know, I'm having some difficulty with my dad. This is in your packet, and I will have time to read it. Attachment to my application, SLUP four, twenty twenty-three, dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The renewal of a SLUP application on the property located eighteen eighteen, eighteen thirty, Ostel Road. Please consider the revision of the staff recommendations attached to my application. Please consider the revision of the zoning division's staff analysis in regards to the fifteen criteria that must be considered for a special land use permit. Applicant is requesting special land use permit for auto salvage, record, wrecker yard, and automobile storage for compensated vehicles. Previous SLUP three, twenty twenty-one, was approved conditionally on twelve months of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. One point nine acre site has been used for wrecker service and towing automobile storage confiscated vehicles since nineteen eighty-six, that's a thirty-seven-year service to the community. The applicant intends to continue to use property and serve community in the same professional manner with no changes to the existing operations of the business. The applicant seeking approval to utilize property for continued use as it exists at present. And it's got the operation hours listed. I have my variances listed. Relax the stipulation of landscape screening on the northern side property line adjacent to residential zone properly. Allow eight-foot privacy fencing, allow six-foot privacy fencing to encompass eastern side. Allow twenty-foot buffer to be established with the vehicles pulled inward on the property to substantiate the actual buffer as we implemented or want to implement a nice aesthetic and affordable plan. Allow the continued service for our customers while conserving the original ground surface for proper stormwater management. The addition of large hardened surface will create necessity of installation of a detention pond. The additional finance obligation for that would be fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. Absolutely unattainable. And of course, I'm hoping you guys got to review the entire packet. I just, I know that this previous meeting, I'm out of time. Thank you for your consideration, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone here in opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
Thank you, and Ms. Norris, prior to you sitting down, I have one question for you. As far as the millings that you've added, how many have you added?
I have it, just because I had to discuss this with Mr. Carver, so I do have it written down. It's just a matter of me finding it. Millings that are put down and rolled into a hardened surface, twenty-seven, two thousand, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen square feet.
Thank you, and then in addition, the tenant that you have there, I know when we approved this a year ago, we had a maximum of a hundred and fifty cars. Has he upheld that limitation, or has he been storing more than a hundred and fifty cars on site?
From what I understand with code enforcement, I believe it's a hundred and ninety there now, and several of those are his business, commercial vehicles that he uses for his business.
Thank you. I have one further, so my understanding, the business that is supposed to be on the site is only for a wrecking and towing service, correct?
For confiscated, yes.
Okay, so besides a wrecker, what other vehicles would he have stored on site besides his own personal vehicle to come and go from the?
I'd have to ask him, I believe he has at least three wreckers, and I'm not sure if he has any other commercial wreckers, or if they're trucks, or... There's more to towing and wrecker than just towing something in as far as with a wrecker. I mean,
So is your tenant also repairing vehicles on site?
No, ma'am, he is not, and I have been asked that several times. He is not. I don't know, I don't know what else to say to that question. It's been asked several times. The storage or the things that he has there are incidental storage. He is not selling parts or cars. And I know of one wrecker service that is selling parts.
I have no other questions for you, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to call Carl Carver to the podium, please.
Carl Carver, can you stall water?
Hi, Carl, thank you. So Ms. Norris said that they put down twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen square feet of millings. My understanding, they did not come through to get a permit to do this work. How would this impact stormwater and potential detention that would need to be on site?
Depends on the exact location of the placement of the millings. If it's in the upper part of the site, up closer to Ostel Road, then I would suspect that the runoff from those millings will go to the rear of the property where the storm drainage from the site exits the property. So without any kind of stormwater detention in place to handle the increased runoff from that hardened surface, then it's going to, it's going to increase the runoff. But if there's enough landscaping or gravel and stuff between the hardened surface and the storm drain system downstream, then it could help control the runoff, the increased runoff, and provide treatment. So, but they are exceeding the five thousand square feet threshold to require stormwater management.
Not done yet. And just for the record, I know in the packet- And just for the record, I know in the packet that they had included a letter from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division. And this letter was, um, given to American Eagle Towing back on, um, June second of twenty twenty-two. And in here, um, they say that, um, the division, meaning the Georgia EPD, has determined that the site is not subject to the industrial stormwater permit based on the standard industrial classification. The main concerns at the site are concerning the zoning of this property, which is a local regulation. Cobb County Zoning Department and Cobb County Local Ordinances will need to address these items. So from my understanding, again, Ms. Norris or Mr. Murphy came in with a site plan to have staff review this prior to doing the work that has been done with the twenty-eight thousand square feet added.
Correct. Uh, uh, there was never a land disturbance application made that I know of. If it had been, it would have been sent to our department to review.
And, um, was that part of the staff comments and recommendations a year ago when we first reviewed this application?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have for you. Thank you. And now if I can have Ms. Foster from code enforcement.
Good morning. My name is Yolisa Foster. I'm from Cobb County Code Enforcement. I've been, um, inspecting the property with another officer, um, on and off for, um, since the last, um, zoning application. And, um, okay, um, just a reminder of the zoning stipulations that was established a year, a year ago. No auto repairs or sales allowed. Final parking plan in effect no later than May thirteenth twenty twenty-three. Final landscape plan to be approved by district commissioner in the next sixty days, which would have been, uh, July seventeen, seventeenth of twenty twenty-two. And also is to be completed within six months of, uh, from the approval date. No outside storage or display of merchandise. Cobb County staff to work with Environmental Protection Agency, EPA. No more than a hundred and fifty vehicles, um, allowed to be parked on a hardened surface. No vehicle shall be placed within twenty feet of the property line. When I inspected the property, I took, uh, uh, photos of the front view of the property to show what, um, the citizens that are passing see when they see the property. There's also a neighborhood across the street that this is their view when they come out of their neighborhood. I also went over to the apartments as, um, they're right next door to them. And the fence is in disrepair, so all of the residents that live on that side, uh, they have to look at the fence that's about to collapse and, and, um, disrepair. Currently, there are a hundred and ninety-four vehicles on the property. As of June fourteenth twenty twenty-three, only a hundred and fifty vehicles are allowed on the property per, um, district commissioner. There was, uh, a lot of trees that were removed without a land disturbance permit. And it had to be approved prior, uh, which would have required a landscaping plan to be signed off by the district commissioner, which was requested last year as well. And due to those trees being cut as well, a site plan is also required now. No automotive repair allowed. So during our, uh, planning commission here and, uh, the business owner stated that he repairs vehicles and sells them in the auction, which is admitting to repairing vehicles. During, we received a complaint from a citizen in regards to a vehicle repair at the front of the property. And they sent over photos. The only thing that should be happening at the property is the vehicles being towed onto or off of the property, but no vehicle repairs are allowed. No incidental storage or outside storage allowed. There is currently outside storage on the property. I walked the property along with Officer Miller and business owner Alberto. And, um, I advised him to, uh, remove the items and everything. He advised me that his carport does have doors that can be closed, his garages and everything. And all items are to be stored within a enclosed structure according to the ordinance for outside storage, along with the stipulations that state no outside storage is allowed. No vehicles are allowed within twenty feet of the property line. They've made improvement on that. Before, there was a lot of cars that was parked along, um, by the fence. And all of those, those vehicles have been removed to, uh, improve the surface for, uh, correcting with the millings and then adding the, um, mixture to make it a harder tree to surface. So, uh, as far as grass, it's not a tit for tat as stated with code enforcement. The issue is that the file was reviewed and notices were, uh, missing for litter and grass. The grass ordinance was updated that states that if a structure is within seventy-five feet of the right of way, the grass must be cut in the front. That structure is within fifty-five feet of the right of way, so they are required to cut the grass. I did issue notice when I realized, um, that notice was missing. And I also did issue a notice for litter when I realized that a notice was never issued. And therefore, I would not be able to issue citations on notices that were never given. They did improve with cutting the weeds. Not only did they cut the weeds on the right of way and in front of the property, they cut the whole property. That was observed on six fourteen as well as has been improvement on the amount of trash on the property. And unless the board has any questions, I'm done.
Thank you for, um, helping us understand what's been going on the property with your presentation.
I do have a question. Um, Ms. Foster, um, did the applicant, did the applicant explain why the trees were torn down? Or provide an explanation as to why the trees were torn down?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, then I guess maybe we can ask.
Um, Ms. Foster, um, I know reading your notes, um, again, much has been discussed about the fencing because again, the fencing and the landscape was supposed to be done this past year that we had given the applicant to do this. The applicant states that fencing is on site. In all of your inspections, have you noticed fencing material on site for, to be put up?
There is a s- a tiny amount of fencing material on the property, but not enough to suffice for the whole property, along with a lot of complaints coming in to code enforcement, the BOC and the planning commission as well.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Norris, if you could approach, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I have a couple of questions for you. Can you, uh, provide an explanation as to why the trees were torn down on, at the property?
To be honest with you, Ms. Foster said those trees are dead and you can cut them down, the ones on the property. And there were specific ones on the other side of our fence that were dead. They were Leyland Cypress trees.
Okay.
There are certain things that code enforcement in the beginning helped me with. And, and it was in disarray that the lot was and the fence. But as she walked the property several times with me, she pointed out certain things to do and get rid of. And she did say, "Trees dead, get rid of it." But you must replace it.
Okay. And also, um, when you came before us last year, there was obviously a number of conditions that, um, that you were required to meet. But can you share with us, uh, the conditions that you did meet?
We started putting millings down.
Pardon?
We started putting the millings down on the surface. I had no idea I needed any kind of permits or land disturbance, anything. I haven't had much communication with anyone except for Jenny Payton.
Okay. But that would have been submitted in the ca- in the staff comments?
What comments?
That you received with your application?
Yes.
Okay.
I sent in several landscape and buffer plans.
Okay.
Probably five or six.
Okay.
Very detailed plans.
Okay.
That I put a lot of work into and none of those plans were approved. Because they were not approved, I was told, "Do not do anything to the property. You stop progress now."
So then you're confirming that in the past twelve months, the only thing, item that you've completed was, um, to, uh, install milling at the site. And that was done without the land, land disturb, disturbance permit? Okay. All right. Thanks. That's all I have.
I have additional questions for the applicant. Ma'am, your site is a storage yard. If it also has record services, is that correct?
It is not a storage yard. The only cars that are stored there now are hung up in paperwork at the magistrate's office.
Okay. Listed on the application, it says automobile storage yard and wrecker services for damaged or confiscated vehicles.
Yes, we store those until they are claimed by the owner. If they're not claimed by the owner, we have to go through a process through the magistrate court, through the state court. And then those cars are usually taken to an auction.
Okay. So none of these vehicles will be at the end of their life cycle?
No, ma'am. I don't believe so.
Okay. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
One, one more question for you, Vicki. And when you say storage yard, you mean you're not storing anything but automobiles?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um, John, I don't think we have anyone from the arborist department here.
No, we do not.
But to my knowledge, because I never saw a landscape plan, was a landscape plan ever submitted to the arborist?
As, as Ms. Norris said, she did submit several plans, but none of those plans met county requirements as far as being done by a landscape architect, being stamped, having materials on it. They're, they're basically a hand drawn plan by her.
And if she would have submitted a landscape plan by an architect in for site plan review, that is what would then drive the arborist out to determine if the trees were viable or needed to be taken down or replanted, correct?
Correct.
So with that, what is staff, staff's recommendation for this application?
The staff's recommendation is to deny the application.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions before I make my motion? Okay. Again, as it was stated, the applicant's initial SLUP was applied for back in June of nine, or twenty twenty-one. From that point, we gave the applicant almost a year to come into compliance before we finally heard the case and then again approved it, giving her a year's time with specific dates to achieve landscape plans, buffers, uh, fencing to which the applicant has not met. We approved that application with the understanding that the applicant was willing to, um, fulfill all of the staff comments and recommendations in addition to the buffer recommendations made by the board as this was originally a variance request by the applicant. Code enforcement and zoning have both gone above and beyond, um, to help this applicant, yet compliance has yet to be achieved. Therefore, I support staff's recommendation to deny SLUP four of twenty twenty-three with all vehicles to be removed from the site by September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? Call for question. The motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Commissioners, I need to take a break until ten thirty.
Hello, and welcome back to today's Board of Commissioners meeting. We will resume our agenda, and I believe we will be going into our other business cases.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, first case on the other business agenda is other business item number 13 of 2023, which is to consider a reduction in public road frontage from 50 feet to 20 feet and a rear setback variance from 35 feet to 24 feet for Mr. Edward M. Glancy Jr. The property is located on the east end of Lakeside Court, east of Lake Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 13?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in to present their case?
Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Edward Michael Glancy Jr. I go by Mike. Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. We are, we're requesting a reduction in the road frontage on our lot that was developed in the 1950s. My understanding, it was prior to a road frontage code. Our lot was actually split in half, which we'll review during my presentation. My wife and I have been Cobb County residents for 32 years. She's a retired Marius City school teacher. I'm an insurance agent on Cobb Parkway and have been since '95. We are tearing down the house that we've lived in for the last three years. It was not our original plan. It was to renovate and make an addition to. But we have found multiple problems with the property. We actually, we did a small renovation shortly after moving in. But we had architects to come out, and they just said they recommended that we tear the house down and start from scratch, which is where we are today. My understanding, the road frontage, there's really nothing that we can do about that. It just, it is what it is. We are requesting a setback variance. My understanding is there's a few criteria that needs to be met in order for that setback variance to be approved. You guys are familiar with them, so I won't read them. Our lot is quite the pie-shaped lot, very narrow at the front, but quite wide, actually, at the back of the property. The southeast corner of the back deck, it's not the actual dwelling of the house, but the back deck, the southeast corner of it. The fireplace on it is 24 feet from the eastern boundary line. The northeast corner is 47 feet from the boundary line, just to illustrate that the property goes back much further on the northern side than it does on the southern side of the house. This is a diagram of the survey, the back of the house. You can see there's two parts of an Elgin septic system. One's on the north, one's on the south. The north one would, well, I'm jumping ahead there. This is the corner of the deck that encroaches on the 35-foot boundary line. That portion of the deck is 16 feet, and so 11 feet of that deck encroaches on the boundary line. My understanding is that because our plans have for a covered deck, that we need to request this setback variance. Both of us grew up in Florida. I was born and raised in Florida. Both of us have multiple times had precancerous material taken from our skin. We would very much like to have a covered deck so we can have some protection from the afternoon sun. And of course, we want to be able to enjoy the beauty of our backyard. Such conditions peculiar to this piece of property. Again, it's just such a pie-shaped lot that the back of it, it gets much wider. But the front, we can't move the house forward anymore than it currently is. We have the full support of all of our immediate neighbors. I'm not aware of any neighbors that have expressed any opposition. There's been no opposition here today or at the previous meetings. This is my direct next-door neighbor. Just they're hopeful that we get this done. This is the neighbor next to him. You know, I'm going to make a quick comment on the second paragraph. There are 10 houses on our cul-de-sac. Two of them are abandoned. We moved in in 2020. Since we've been there, there has been no occupancy of either houses. One of the houses is really kind of being taken over by overgrown brush. And so everybody back there is in favor of improvement of properties. This is one of the houses that's being overtaken by brush. There's actually trees growing through the flooring of the structure. This is the house on the corner. I have spoken with the owner. That owner lives in North Carolina. I have no idea what their plans are, but it's, again, it's been abandoned, and all of the neighbors are in favor of improving our little area back on Lakeside Drive. This is my next-door neighbor to the south. Just full support. Neighbor next to him, Peter Bright, who's two doors over. This is Greg and Sarah Brooks, and they're full support. Greg and Sarah did the same thing that we're doing, which was a teardown. They did theirs in 2020. I make special note of them because they requested a setback variance from 35 feet to 4 feet. They were approved for their setback variance. And I think that their newly-built home greatly improves the value of our little community, and we're hoping that more of our neighbors will do that. So this is the Brooks' house. And that's really all I've got at this moment. I'm aware of the impervious surfaces. I wanted to reassure the board that we will not exceed the impervious surface requirement. And then that's our view from the lake, or from the house to the lake. We are 223 feet. Our property line, not the house, but the actual, the eastern property line is 223 feet from the lake. We are very, very active in the lake community, certainly in the cleanup of it, because we take great pride in that area and don't want it to be dirty or full of trash. And we are installing an Elgin septic system, which is known to be probably the highest end of waste disposal septic systems. And that's all the comments that I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Not yet. We'll see if there's anyone else here to speak with respect to the application. Then I will ask staff for their assessment of the matter, and then we'll turn things over to the Commissioner. Okay, is there anyone else here to speak with respect to this other business item? All right, seeing none. John, what is staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend that the board approve the request subject to the site plan contained in the other business packet dated February 28, 2023, approval of reduction of public road frontage to 20 feet, approval of the rear setback variance as shown on the approved site plan dated, or the site plan received February 28, 2023, subject to stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet, and fire department comments contained in the other business packet.
All right, thank you, John. Commissioner, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I have no questions for you at this time, Mr. Glancy. Does anyone from the board have any questions?
Commissioner Burrow. Excuse me, sir, we have one question.
I have a question. On the site plan that John just referred to, February 28, you have a red arrow going to rear setback variance needed here only. Is that the deck?
Yes, ma'am, that is the southeast portion of the deck.
But is there an existing deck in your?
We're actually, we're completely tearing the existing house down and rebuilding a new home.
Oh, okay. That's what I was, and then it would be covered? You're asking that it be covered? Okay. Thank you. I just needed clarification because I couldn't. Okay, thank you.
Actually, Mr. Glancy, I do have one question for you. At our last hearing, we had asked you to get with the Corps, and I know part of the question on the Corps was your lot lines, but then it was also to have the Corps review your site plan and state their opinion. Did you ever get that?
I spoke with the Corps, and they said whatever happens on your side of the property was not their interest. They were only concerned about their side of the property.
Okay, thank you. And so just for the board's information, so Mr. Glancy brought up the Peter Bright property. We had heard that about a year ago and denied that request that he had asked for a variance for. In addition to that, the Brooks' property, my understanding, that home, while it was given a variance, originally was built on Corps property. So again, the home had to be torn down and rebuilt, and hence, that variance was given. I also understand that we give variances based on a case-by-case basis. So with that, this applicant has requested a reduction in public road frontage from 50 feet. And John, is it to 24 or is it to 20 feet? Just for clarification, because I've seen it both ways.
It's the 20 feet.
To 20 feet, okay. And a rear setback variance from 35 feet to 24 feet. I move to approve only the applicant's request to reduce the public road frontage from the required 50 feet to 20 feet. However, this motion does not approve the rear setback variance for it should remain at 35 feet because the applicant will be demolishing the existing home and rebuilding. This does not create an extraordinary or exception to the conditions for this piece of property. The applicant has not expressed or explained how denial of the rear setback variance would create an unnecessary hardship, and staff had advised the applicant of such requirements in an email to the applicant dated May 1, 2023. The general area in which this home is located has numerous non-conforming lots. And while this lot meets the required square footage for an R-20 lot, I have reason to believe that if the request for setback reduction was granted, in addition to exceeding the required 35% impervious surface requirement, this would set precedence in this unique area, which is directly adjacent with Lake Alatuna, which we do not need to remind this board of it serving a source of our drinking water for over a million people and recreation for the metro area and whose protection should remain a diligent priority. Prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy, a subdivision plat revision must be recorded showing all improvements on the lot along with the setbacks and reference OB 13 of 2023 stipulations as recorded by the clerk. The surveyor must submit the revised plat to the Community Development Agency for review and approval by the district commissioner prior to filing in Superior Court. All fire department comments and recommendations, all stormwater comments. In addition, the applicant shall not exceed the 35% impervious surface as required by code. DOT and water and sewer comments, as may be revised during site plan review. And any and all changes must come before the Board of Commissioners for approval. That is my motion.
Second. Is there any discussion? I have some questions with respect to the rear setback request. As was stated in the Commissioner's motion that there is not a hardship based off your application. May you explain why you are requesting this rear setback? And if there was opportunity for the home that's being proposed to be constructed in a different fashion?
Well, the hardship is, my understanding is we don't even need the setback variance if we don't have a roof over it. The hardship is we would like to be able to be protected from the sun because of we have so much skin dancer, skin cancer we've had. So it's just, that's our hardship. We want to be protected from the sun while still being able to enjoy the home as it is designed.
Yes, Commissioner.
So will this room have heating and air conditioning?
The home will have heating and air conditioning.
But that's the home. You didn't ask if the deck will.
This room that you're going to be closing. So it's not going to be like a sunroom, day room?
That's correct. It's going to be completely open. It's, we're not even screening it. We're just having a roof over it. My understanding is we don't even need the setback variance if we don't have a roof over it, but we would like to have a roof so we can keep the sun off of our skin.
Yes, and that roof is what creates that addition of impervious.
That is our hardship. We would like to be able to protect our skin from the harmful rays of the sun.
And I just want confirmation from someone else. I know that this is, I'm sure you're being forthright with us, but if I can have a helper input from someone from Community Development on that assertion that if this was not covered, he would not need a variance?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
In your presentation, I thought you said that this, you would still be within the 35% impervious with this and the roof, or no?
Yes, ma'am. We will not exceed the requirement.
35% impervious. Well, since you're tearing down the house that's there now and rebuilding, is there any way to include the deck at the back of the house without extending it out? Or the 35 feet, 35, what's required, the setback, 35-foot rear setback? without extending it out for the 35 feet, 35, what's required, the setback, 35 foot rear setback?
Well, it would cause it to kind of look like a, it would look, the house would look awkward. And the back of it would not be architecturally like, it wouldn't look good. And, and it wouldn't certainly be as useful to us.
Just to help remind the board, when we first heard this, his original site plan did not have the impervious surface coverage on it, which was also one of my concerns. Mr. Glancy, I don't remember the date that you had emailed me, but essentially stated that his engineer did not have the time to go and put that impervious surface on the site plan, which again, I found a little concerning. My other concern with denying this, and while he wants to cover this, is again, we are sitting next to the lake. We know we have other homeowners that want to have the enjoyment of the lake as well. By covering it, we're going to potentially be blocking someone else's view, which then is going to want them to expand out. And then we're going to just, again, encroach further and further closer to the lake to have that enjoyment. The biggest thing I can think of is, I believe it's Indian Hills in East Cobb, where we've had the tear down rebuild and houses are getting bigger and bigger, which then is impacting the view shed of adjacent neighbors. My concern is we're going to be starting this here, yet this is adjacent to our drinking water.
I, I don't perceive that this blocks the view, but I don't know if there's a, I don't know if that's a, does it block the view of adjacent neighbors? Do we have that confirmed?
That wasn't something that we typically, but this is kind of on a cul-de-sac. And so you can kind of see in this lower corner here where the existing houses.
Yeah, I see, I see the corner. I just, I'm not sure if I, I, I think my, the, the reason why I seconded the approval of the frontage setback and, and okay with the not approval on the rear setback was because my understanding in the motion was that the rebuild could consider a way to reorient that space to enjoy it. And I see you kind of want to respond to some of the assertions here, so please.
Well, all of my neighbors, including the neighbor on the southern side, which would be the lower half of the screen, are in full support. All, every, every neighbor that you can see up there has, has, they're in full support of, of what we're doing. And I have all the letters that was in my presentation. There is no objection to it. Our, our distance to the, to the lake from our home is over 250 feet to our, and that's to the closest part of our, the decking. It's 223 feet to the property line. So as you can see, there's a, there's a pretty large tree buffer behind it.
Okay. And just for the second half of what I had kind of inquired on there, is there no alternative way in which the structure could be, that room could be reoriented to deliver that benefit, but be incorporated into the current impervious footprint?
Because of the septic system that we are employing, the Elgin septic system, the, there's the septic tank, and I think it's called a dosing tank, that are just on the north side of the dwelling, on the, on the north side of it. And then we, we are planning to have a swimming pool that's in the survey. And so it, we couldn't adjust it around to, to allocate that without changing substantially the structure.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
I have a question regarding the square footage of the properties as you enter Lakeside Drive to the left and right. Would you happen to know what the square footage is, what the square footage is for those properties?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So Commissioner Sheffield, to help you out, if you start with the OB 3 application and you count 1, 2, 3 to your left, the, the very tiniest. Yep, CP's got his cursor on there. That is the Bright property that came in a year ago, asking for a similar variance. And we also need to remember that when these homes were originally built, these were supposed to be in, in Mr. Glancy's presentation. He didn't say it, but it was written in there, that these were originally intended to be boat houses, weekend houses, not something to be lived in full time. Of course, over time, we've evolved into having residents stay here full time. So these two lots are non-conforming. The Brooks property that Mr. Glancy pointed out, that one is not non-conforming, if I remember correctly. But I do not remember the square footage on the other ones. I believe the property to, again, if you go clockwise, adjacent to Glancy's, that one is approximately the same size in square footage.
Same size as the subject as the application?
Okay.
You mean with the rebuild or the current?
The square footage of the property, it, the square footage is the same. Again, that app, that homeowner hasn't come in and asked for a tear down rebuild and any variances. But again, we could potentially be setting precedence going forward.
And are all of these done in R20?
Yes, they are. They're R20, but it was known that they were non-conforming lots because again, when these were originally built, they were weekend cottages, boat houses. And then over time, and again, in Mr. Glancy's presentation, he stated that the previous owner had added on to make it the current home. And then they had also remodeled it to expand the footprint, and now he's asking to do more.
So ju, just for clarification and looking at this, there was a mention that the, the deck or the addition would block the view shed from the property. So which properties would that adversely impact?
It would potentially adversely impact because remember, he's changing the orienta, orientation of the existing home. It would potentially impact the home on both sides. Well, the deck would impact the home, that would be to the clockwise potentially. Again, yes, they could see straight out one way, but if they're used to looking another way.
I mean, because what I'm looking at now, you know, the subject parcel, that house is a little farther. It, it's a little closer to the property line, so it's not in an exact alignment with that property. So it's kind of blocking. I don't know that anything would be different there.
And again, it's, it's the potential because that was the same concern of the Bright property. Because actually, they were wanting to go up on that one. And again, it, it's everybody having the same enjoyment of the lake. But while this would potentially impact view shed, it's more of getting into the setback buffer requirements. While, again, this is just experience talking here, I have another applicant that will be coming forward with another application. Again, I asked them to send their site plan to the Corps of Engineers prior to applying. And the Corps of Engineers has replied, they are fine with it as long as they do not, you know, interfere with the setback requirements. So using that, Mr. Glancy did not get that from the Corps of Engineers, but knowing that the Corps of Engineers asked us of another application that we're going to be hearing in the future, I'm asking to uphold those same standards here.
Are there any other?
Are there any other comments or questions?
All right, hearing none. There was a motion in the second. I'm going to call the question. The motion passed as 401 with Chairman Cooper in opposition.
Okay, next case is other business item number 23 of 2023, which is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Iglesia Missionera Roja de Salvación regarding resoning applications Z13 of 2020 for property located at the southwest intersection of Mableton Parkway and Boggs Road in land lot 190 of the 18th District. Is the applicant present? Let Director Shula, the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 23?
You have one in opposition.
Two.
More than one.
Three. Let Director Shula, there's three people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Whenever you're ready, sir, you can begin.
Okay, hello?
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Christian Martinez, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Church Rock of Salvation in Mableton, Iglesia Missionera Roja de Salación. It's a six acre property on the side of Boggs Road and Mableton Parkway. And our church has been in Mableton for 19 years with pastors Arturo and Orma Martinez. And we plan to, to build a church on this property. And we also have, I also have the civil engineer with me and the architect. If he can pass forward and explain a little bit about, about the, the silver drawings.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is George Rendon. I am the civil engineer for the, for the property.
Thank you, I just want to make sure he's been sworn in. Okay, just, okay, thank you.
So basically, we're just proposing to develop the, the land. We're accessing the Mableton Road and the Boggs Road. Plans have been submitted to the Georgia Department of Transportation. This is basically a revision to an already approved zoning. So basically, we're coming back because we changed the site plan. The building is, is, is a little bit smaller from the original approved version. So, and it's architectural different too. So basically, one of the stipulations, the original stipulations where if we change the site plan and, or the building size and the architecture, we need to come back and, and be in front of you and represent the case. So if you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll hear from anyone else who's here in support. If no one else is here in support, we'll hear from opposition. Is anyone else here in support of the application? All right, well, now hear from opposition.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm with the Mableton Improvement Coalition's zoning committee. First of all, we really appreciate the work that the Rock of Salvation Church has put into this application. We're excited that they're going to be able to move ahead with, with building the church. I think, like many of us, they, they were dealt a little bit of a blow by the pandemic, so we're happy to see this project move forward. The original elevations and drawings that we saw of the architecture did not conform to the Mableton design, Mableton Parkway design guidelines. And so once we pointed that out, the, the team was very, was very willing to make some adjustments to that architecture. Unfortunately, we didn't receive a second revision to those until late last night, and we really have not had a chance to look at them. So we, we're certainly open to a solution here this morning that would provide some opportunity either for an architectural review committee, which was a propos, which is a condition of the, of the current zoning, to carry that forward, to look at, to, to refine those plans after an approval if that were to happen today. Also, we would appreciate the, the condition that, that provides for a landscape review committee. We have seen the landscape plan and we like it very much, but we also understand that during plan review, there may, may need to be some additional engineering that makes some changes to that landscape plan. And so we would like to see that again if it's possible. And also, we have not seen the final color palette for the various components of the exterior and hope that that could be a part of any sort of post-approval architectural review. So thank you very much. And again, we are excited that the congregation is, has the opportunity to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none. Commissioner, I'll turn it over to you. As a matter of fact, before I do that, let me get staff's recommendation.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board commissioners approve the request subject to the site plan dated May 23rd, 2023. Project to meet the Mableton design guidelines prior to issuance of land disturbance permit. Stormwater management comments, site plan review comments, COB DOT comments, fire comments, and all those are within the other business packet. And finally, all previous conditions not in conflict remain in effect.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield.
Fantastic. I have a question for DOT, actually.
Ms. Flora, DOT.
Good morning, Ligia. With respect to your recommendation of 1B, I just have a follow-up question on the timeframe as it relates to the pedestrian improvements. When should the applicant construct that portion in front of his property?
Yeah, we will have to coordinate. The project is about to be awarded, I believe. I think we are eating in, either in bidding or we are receiving bids. So yes, it will be promptly. We need to coordinate.
Okay, fantastic, because that's the second phase of this project, right? So it's not quite underway, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was the only question that I had for Ligia, DOT. Do you guys have any questions?
No questions. No? Do you have any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
The additional 884 square feet, is that in the second story?
Where is the applicant? It, that's what I read in the comments, is the applicant can approach? And while you're approaching, I just want to make a correction. The engineer indicated that there's been a reduction, and it's actually been an increase by 884 square feet. But the question is, is the 884 square, square feet, excuse me, is on the second floor?
Um, yes, there's a, so the building is going to be done in two phases. So I think the, the plans would be if.
Because, John, the original application, it, it originally had two floors, correct?
It had, it had, it had two floors, but I think the way it was worded is the second floor was a mezzanine level. And this one is more of a two-story level on the right-hand side of the building. It contains offices.
Okay. But the original building that was approved was 28,000 square feet with two stories, but 28,000. And now they're, they finished their plans and finds that the building size has increased to 28, 884, which includes the second story. So is the footprint expanded or is it the upstairs?
No, it's always been two stories, but what they're going to do now is include administrative offices, and that would account for the additional 884 square feet on the second floor.
Okay.
So on the, if you see the plans, the fellowship area to the right side is going to be removed and, and going to be added on to the second phase. Also, the, the second floor, which is more classrooms, is going to be. Also, the second floor, which is more classrooms, is going to be on top of the first level, which is the area where we have the kitchen, the restrooms, the offices, and the classrooms. And the sanctuary is going to sit a total of 630 members. Is there any more questions?
No, I was just trying to clarify that the footprint on the bottom floor is the same and not affecting impervious.
Impervious, right, yeah.
Setbacks.
Right, I understand.
Yep.
Okay.
And in this case, it will not. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion unless there are questions from anyone else. No? Okay. I make a motion to approve OB 23 with the additional stipulations that's already been read into the record. A landscape review committee to be established composed of the applicant, the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and the county arborists to review the final landscape plan during the plan review process. An architectural review committee to be established consisting of the Mableton Improvement Coalition and to confirm that the elevations are consistent with the Mableton design guidelines. Provisions of a color palette agreeable to the applicant and the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and the final site plan, landscape plan, building elevations, and color palette to be approved by the district commissioner. And that concludes my motion.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay, next item is other business item number 25 of 2023, which is consider amending the site plan and stipulations for CMC Custom Homes LLC regarding resuming application Z37 of 2007. The property is located on the west side of Aquar through West Road, South McLaur Road in Land Lot 122 of the 20th District. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 25? Please sign and raise your hand. Two? Okay. Okay, the director shows three people here opposed. Can I get a show of people here who are in support? Please raise your hands.
He raised his hand for both.
Yeah, he, I think it's two opposed, one support. Okay, yeah, let's correct the record. Two opposed, one in support.
Doing the best we can.
Covering both faces.
You can begin.
Good record. Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Hough, Law Firm, Sam's Lock and Huff, and I represent CMS Custom Homes in relation to this other business item before you. What you're seeing on the aerial is the site that we're talking about. The northern portion of that property is currently zoned, is zoned RSL. It was owned in 2007. The zoning for the RSL was 4.9 units per acre. It had a quad layout, and I'll show you that in just a second. And then the southern portion of this property is zoned R30 and will remain R30, and we have a proposal that combines both of these together with access on the Aquar through West Road. This is the site plan that was approved in 2007. There you can see the RSL portion of the property with quads and up to, again, 4.9 units per acre. It was 60-something homes, I believe. And then to the south is the R30 portion of the property, and what we're coming forward with is to amend the site plan on the RSL and also to formally approve the, just three lots on the property to the south. So this is the site plan that we originally filed with the other business application. It's important to see how we've gone through the process, and in this case, you can see the layout for the RSL community in the north and then the three homes to the south. We initially had some buffer variances on the south where we were sliding those homes slightly towards the east, further away from the subdivision that's an R20 subdivision to the west. But we had received some comments that get those homes out of the buffer area, and then there was also some delineation of the creeks on the northern portion. There's a lake on the adjacent property. And so my client walked the property with Frank Gibson. Shout out to him as an excellent county employee, has always, does a great job. And Mr. Peterson has confirmed that he's reviewed this site plan that I'm about to show you and agrees to what we've done there, and it makes some significant changes to that layout. So here you can see how we've moved all the homes further away from the stream on the northern portion of the property, and on the southern portion of the property, we have ensured that the driveway that accesses those three homes are in fact outside the stream buffer areas and actually there's on the southern portion of the property. And the reason why I'm focusing on the southern portion of the property, I know that people with questions and concerns are related to the southern portion of the property. And so we have those homes there, they're outside of the stream buffers. We actually have increased the buffers in some of those areas down in the southern portion of the property, and they have the correct setback for the property to the west. I do want to point out that I think the neighbors to the west have questions and concerns. Always look at inconsistency between developments, and this is an R30 proposal here with three lots on six acres. To the west is an R20, and there's seven lots that have joined that. So we're seven versus three, so we're actually very compatible in terms of relating to our adjacent property owners. To the north, that's Summer Winds Community, that is well buffered with a stream buffer that goes through there. And I forgot to mention, as I started this whole dialogue, is that this property is directly south of US 41, which is all commercial. So you're on Aquar through West Road, leaving 41 going south, and so that's, the RSL makes sense because it is a step down as you're leaving the commercial activity that you have on 41, and then you step down, then you have an RSL. And what we have proposed now is 29, only 29 lots of the RSL. 3.68 units per acre is our density on that component. And then I submit a letter dated June 15, where we detail some of the conditions that we've talked about on terms of access to Aquar through West Road and also the buffers that have been worked with Frank Gibson. And then we added a condition that lot 11 to the north, it is a tight lot, and if we have to get in the buffer, we would remove that lot, and it would remove the density, the number of units by one if that has to, if cannot be built. Recognize that. We also have a dialogue with a gentleman who raises his hand in support. And on the southern end of the site plan, there's, the creek has got some debris in the creek, and we've agreed, and what's happened is there's some logs and debris that's blocked the creek, and so it creates some flooding off-site, and we have agreed that we will get in there. We have to do it with hand tools. We can't go in there with heavy equipment, but we will free up that to make sure that that stream flows unimpeded and does not cause any drainage issues off-site. So at this time, I'm gonna, the gentleman who raises his hand in support, I'm gonna have him come up and share his thoughts on this case.
Well, my name's Jimmy Richards. Live on Aquar through West Road, and Commissioners, I know it's confusing. I'm up here in support of a zoning, not against one, but when it involves your mother-in-law 52 years, you do what your mother-in-law tells you to do. Right there on number three, there is a, as he's, well, there's a bend in the creek. The creek says unnamed creek, but it's Richardson Creek. We just haven't got the signs there yet. There's a bend in the creek that over the years, since the sewer system was put in back through that creek line in the mid-'80s, it caught, all the trees fell in, everything's washed downstream from other developments, and it's blocked up. And every time we have one of those 100-year rains, 100-year floods, which I think we're at 1,200 years now, it backs up, it floods back on my mother-in-law's property, all the way upstream to my property, all the way back up towards Kings Gate. That's where the creek started from a spring that fed Richardson Farms back in the '20s. And they've agreed to unjam all that because there's no way that you could get into the property to do it at all. I've attempted it several times, I'm getting too old for this, and we just need help, and they've agreed to do that. I was here in 2007 when all this was approved. The late Judy Williams worked with the community when the whole RSL was going to be developed for the Latham and the Walker property, which is about 14 acres at that time. Just a few months ago, we approved getting the Latham property. They took the LRO off of it, made it all RSL, which is great. Now we're, the Walker family, because of reasons, they, you know, had to sell the rest of the property to take care of Mrs. Walker, and the Walker family's been over backwards with the neighbors to work with us and what we like to see, especially the three estate houses, because that keeps it at R30 and stops any step down further up, because from that point south to Stylesborough Road, about all the houses that have an Aquar through West Road, they're one acre or more. So we're trying to preserve that part of our community in Morris Hill. The runoff that, we got Morris Hill Downs, Summer Winds, Pepper Mill. Pepper Mill gets flooded real bad because they're back up to the creek. A lot of that runoff comes down through there and goes up under the new viaduct that the county put in. It's just that small part of Richardson Creek, it backs up the neighborhood and floods real bad. We can't even get out of our driveways, but we appreciate the applicant trying to take care of that problem we've had for about 45 years, and ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in support? We'll go ahead and hear from opposition. Thank you.
Honorable members of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, my name is Pam Sanders, and I stand before you today not just as a concerned citizen of this beloved community, but also as a voice for many others.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, could you hold your microphone closer to your mouth?
Oh, okay, sorry. But as a concerned citizen of our beloved community and a voice for many others who also share my concern, we gather here to discuss the potential environmental implications of rezoning the parcel of current residential senior living designation to other uses. Our concerns center around the potential harm to a significant waterway present on the south parcel. This waterway, like the veins of our body, is crucial to the health of our local ecosystem. Its well-being directly influences the balance of our local wildlife and the overall quality of life in our community. With this in mind, we are asking for a contractor-funded, comprehensive analysis of the creek that could be impacted by the proposed changes. We have watched with growing concern the ripple effect of overdevelopment in local waterways in other communities. It's a pattern we fear might replicate here, leading to the unrepairable damage to our cherished local environment. Not only could the proposed rezoning disrupt the natural habitats of wildlife, but it could greatly alter water runoff patterns. This change in turn heightens the risk of flooding, an outcome that would undoubtedly bring a host of other yet unnamed environmental consequences. We may also consider the larger picture. Cobb County's waterways, including this south parcel, are an integral part of a network of aquatic ecosystems. Their health contributes to the well-being of neighboring water systems, supporting the wildlife and green spaces we all value. Protecting them isn't just a local issue, it's a regional imperative. We understand and respect the progress and development of all vital aspects of thriving community. However, they should not come at the cost of our environment we all share and depend upon. Therefore, we are advocating for the importance of maintaining buffer zones. They are critical in safeguarding our waterways, ensuring the health of our own. Our proposal hints is simple and direct, retain the current zoning. This represents a solution that respects the growth and progress we all need for a vital balance of our local ecosystem. The RSL designation has served our community well, preserving the environmental balance well, allowing to be respectful cohabitations of our senior residents. In conclusion, we respectfully urge you, the Board of Commissioners, to take these concerns into serious consideration. Our community is defined not by just the people who live here, but the natural beauty that surrounds us. We make, let's continue to make decisions that honor and protect its intrusive value, ensuring the Cobb County remains a place where both people and nature can thrive together. We were just given a new copy of the plan. We would like to ask for time to review that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I believe we had someone else here in opposition.
Hi, my name is Mary Beth Jones, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of an adjacent property to this proposed rezoning, and when I received the information in the mail regarding the site plan, I spoke with Mr. Peterson, I sent emails, I spoke with Mr. Peterson, I spoke with Mr. Carver. I also made a phone call to the Army Corps of Engineers, and I spoke with someone in community development. And I have a concern regarding variances allowed. These buffers are put in place for a reason, to protect creeks and to protect people's property. I have a concern about stormwater runoff and erosion. My property currently has no issues with flooding, and I believe that that could be seriously impacted by development of that property, and that's a huge concern of my husband and I. And the site plan that we had to review was not the one that was presented here today, and a new site plan was never provided to us to review. So, thank you.
Okay, last call for anyone in opposition. All right, seeing done, I'll close the hearing. John, can you let us know what staff's opinion is?
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board approve the request, subject to the letter of agreeable conditions from Parks Hough dated June 15, 2023. Number two, site plan received by zoning division on June 15, 2023, with the district commissioner permitting minor modifications. Number three, water and sewer comments contained in the other business packet. Number four, stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. Number five, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And number six, fire department comments contained in the other business packet.
Thank you, John. Commissioner.
Thank you. Parks, if I can call you up, please. I know based, I had extensive conversations with Mr. Huff and his, the applicants for this property, along with Mr. Richards, and my understanding is from your conversations regarding stormwater flooding, you met with Frank Gibson on site. Could you please address some of that as far as the buffering and what was discussed in those meetings?
Yes, if you could tell from the original site plan we submitted, it had, did not understand, the site plan did not understand. did not, uh, understand, the, the site plan did not understand some of the drainage issues, especially leaving the lake that's on the adjacent property. And my client met Mr. Gibson on site. Uh, he's always very responsive and provides great guidance to, uh, any client that has stormwater buffer or, uh, stream buffer issues. Uh, and so the site plan that was presented, uh, later on in June fifteenth reflects, uh, the conditions that he asked for to be put on that plan. And so we respect those buffers and make sure that we don't have any negative impact on downstream property owners. We also heard from Mr. Richards and he had specific questions. We also had heard, uh, we were actually, thought it might be a positive to move those homes slightly, the three estate lots, to move them slightly eastward, uh, so they'd be a little further away, but we heard, uh, from some feedback that no, no buffer variances for those. So, we moved them back and made sure that their driveways are also outside the, the buffer, uh, area. So, we, we accommodated everything Mr. Gibson asked for.
Okay. And just to clarify for the audience, um, again, my apologies, um, I did not have your emails on file to send you the updated site plan when I received this last week. Um, but from what I can tell from the site plan that you probably received that is dated April eleventh by the county, there were twenty-nine units shown. The applicant has reduced that by three and now we're looking at twenty-six. In addition to that, a condition has been put on lot number eleven, which upon reviewing the site plan was concerning to me, that would be infringing upon the stream bank buffers. And the applicant has agreed that if it's determined that they cannot construct that home without impinging on the buffer requirements, then they would drop that lot, bringing it down to twenty-five. Does that help you? Um, Mrs. Jones?
Thank you. Actually, um, our property is adjacent to the lower tract, tract B. And so that, that was my concern. And also, what I failed to bring up before also is the road that they're proposing, um, to exit that property and that development. We live in that area, Acworth due west is a two-lane road, it's very busy, and that road is proposed to come out on a blind curve. So, I'm not sure if they have actually, um, done any studies with the DOT regarding that. I, I would be interested in knowing if they have. And also, when I, I didn't mention earlier, when I did speak with the Army Corps of Engineers, they had concerns. Um, they spoke to me about any erosion or damage to creeks with the flow. Because when you restrict creek flow, then it creates problems downstream and upstream. And there is a pond and a lake there. So, my concern was really with the lower tract. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Legia.
Hi, Florim, DOT.
Hi, Legia. I know, um, again, the applicant has worked with DOT as to the location of this entryway. Can you speak to that, please?
Right. So, this would be coming to, if this is approved, we will be coming to, um, for plan review. And at that time, our comment states that we have to ensure that there's enough site distance, because it is on a curve, and that there's, they included a deceleration lane, which is not shown currently on the plan. So, that would be, we'll be looking for that. It does not require a traffic study based on the amount of, the dwellings that they're proposing. It's only twenty-five, like you stated, twenty-six or twenty-five. So, does not, um, meet that threshold, but we will be looking at a minimum for the entrance to be designed per the standards, a deceleration lane and the site distance requirement.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Legia? Does anyone else have any other questions?
Um, when this was approved in two thousand and seven, it says there were, um, pardon? Sixty-two. And then LRO was where the R-30 is going now. Okay. So, that's a big reduction.
No, actually, the, the LRO was closer to the commercial and then this was all to be RSL. So, so the, the LRO has been removed, that's being developed as RSL, as is this parcel.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Um, before I do that, I have one other, um, clarifying stipulation and John, help me with the language here. Um, and Parks, if I get this wrong, please correct me as well. On the site plan, the, the portion labeled A is the part that is going to be restricted to RSL, the senior living fifty-five and plus. The units that are in section B are going to be for sale only, but not age-restricted. But then also, um, while we put the, um, stipulation that all units will be for sale, um, with a ten percent rental restriction allowed for the portion labeled A on the site plan dated June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Am I good with that, John? Okay. Good with that, Parks? And that's all I have to add. So, um, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve OB twenty-five of twenty twenty-three, um, with the stipulations as read by John Peterson and then added by myself.
And all staff comments?
John had already read all those in. Got it. Thank you.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Brown?
On the ten percent cap on the RSL, they still have to be age-restricted.
Yes. Do I need to include that?
I would.
Okay. So, I would like to amend my motion for the ten percent rental restriction, that it is to be rented to those fifty-five and older as well.
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five-zero.
All right. Next item on the agenda is other business item number twenty-eight of twenty twenty-three, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Matthew Bowman, Jr., regarding rezoning application, C thirty-seven, two thousand and three. The property is located on the north side of Veston Memorial Highway, southeastern of Buckner Road, in land lots one sixty-five and one sixty-six of the eighteenth district. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number twenty-eight? Please raise your hand. Two? Let the director show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in. Oh, can I get a show of people here who are in support of other business item number twenty-eight? Please stand and raise your hands.
Uh, good morning, board members. How y'all doing? Um, I'm Matthew Bowman. I'm the owner of Prohibition Liquor. I just retired from the Army with twenty-eight year, twenty-one years of active federal service. Um, yesterday was actually prohibition's, uh, two-year anniversary, June nineteenth. I would consider, uh, prohibition liquor as a very classy, neat and organized liquor store that is professionally operated and we provide top-tier customer service to our community. Um, we've been through this license process, this board hearing twice, and we were approved twice. Um, we're asking that you, um, approve us for a third time to allow for a liquor and packer store in the Providence Pavilion Shopping Center, so that we can move forward with the process. Um, we've committed a lot of time, effort and, uh, money into this project already. Um, we did that with the confidence that we did get approved for our county license and then two weeks later, we were approved for our state license. Um, so we're about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into this project. Um, it was brought to our attention a couple of months ago that, I guess there was some, a stipulation, and I don't know if I'm using the correct wording, or stipulation or something that was put on the books in two thousand and three, that stated that a liquor store and other, um, other businesses couldn't be in that, uh, actual shopping center. Just want to note, I, I mean, put on, put on record or just note that Publix has been there for, I think, roughly about fifteen to twenty years and they sell, um, they do sell beer and wine. So, um, and there are other public shopping centers in the Cobb County area that also have liquor stores in their parking lots. But, um, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Opposition?
Yeah, support.
Oh, sorry. Continue. Anyone else in support? Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Robin Meyer and I co-chair the zoning committee for the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. Uh, Mick does recommend, uh, approval of this application. Uh, the Bowman's live within a few miles of the, uh, Providence Pavilion Shopping Center and they're already successful entrepreneurs, uh, with their first location of prohibition liquors. As Mr. Bowman explained, the, um, Publix next door to this location has been selling beer and wine for about twenty years, but they've been there. Businesses have, who cater to families, uh, have located here and families shop here. The center continues to have strong professional management, likely encouraged by the location of Publix there. And we see no reason to think that any standards will be lowered if this business is approved. Please remember that this is a package store, not a bar. Like the alcohol purchased at, at Publix purchases, um, here will be consumed elsewhere. We think this is a great example of entrepre, of the kind of entrepreneurship that we want to see in Mabelton, local residents recognizing, uh, a need in the business community and stepping forward to fill it. So, thank you very much and we ask you that you approve this application.
Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this application? All right, seeing done, we'll now hear from opposition.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. How are you? My name is Marissa Elliott and I actually, uh, also live in Mabelton, uh, in the Providence community, right across the street from said, uh, shopping plaza. Um, I've been here, this is now my third time in opposition of this liquor store and, um, my thoughts and opinions still remain the same about it. I, I, as well as others in my community, do not want it in the shopping plaza. And instead of belaboring things that I've already said over the last year, my overarching question is, why was this stipulation put in place in the first? And what will it mean if it's overturned? Yes, it could possibly allow for the liquor store to be placed there, but what else? So, it was put in place for a reason. I think, um, the focus should be on why that was put in place. I understand that Mabelton most certainly does want and need, um, businesses with positive revenue streams, but another liquor store in Mabelton is not what we need. There are five in a four and a half mile perspective, uh, from where, um, Mr. Bowman is wanting to put his shop. His other shop is, if I'm not mistaken, about two-point-four miles from this public shopping plaza. We have enough liquor stores. That's it for me and I, I just thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Nash and I'm live on Queen Mill Road, right down the street from the Publix Shopping Center. And as she mentioned, the main objection here is that, that, I know the committees, as you have this morning, worked tirelessly to make sure when these zonings are approved, that it's what the citizens and the developers are both looking for. And it's an agreement between the two. And you put stipulations in place to make sure that everybody's wishes are maintained. This has been twenty years. We don't have records, I tried to find them, back then, of all the conversations that went into play on why a liquor store was prohibited in this shopping center. But I would assume that there was neighbors at the time that had concerns about that as well. Um, my, I can empathize that he spent the money and I'm so sorry that this has happened, but it seems like to me everything's worked in reverse to start with. It seems like he should have never been offered a lease in the shopping center if that was a prohibited occupancy. That should have been discussed with him in the get-go to get that cleared up before he was ever allowed to start construction. I'm not sure why the liquor board didn't catch that as well. That, to me, should have been a consideration then to give him a license in a shopping center where it was prohibited to be there. And then thirdly, it came before the commissioners and no mention was made then of it as well. So, it missed three state chances to get caught and now we're caught with it here. The fact that it's here is that now the signs are up and they're placed in weird positions when they place the zoning signs. Uh, it was explained to me they had to be five hundred feet apart and that's why it was done. The lower entrance, which is the least used, has a sign. Then they went five hundred feet up the other way, which you can only read the sign if you're going down the highway. There's nowhere to stop and read it unless you're stopped at the stoplight that said that there was a stipulation change. And that's, and I, he has photos of the sign itself and I think he showed it as well. It strictly just says in a stipulation amendment. No word, wording was put in there that it was a stipulation amendment to allow a liquor store. And to me, that's pretty important. I guess I know that you're supposed to look at that up, go home, look it up on your county website and figure out what's going on, but realistically, the public does not do that. They don't know about all these procedures and I know they should inform themselves, that's on them. I've tried to put it out there on next door. I've tried to put it on Facebook. I've tried to let people know what's going on because it's important. That's what you, why you post the signs, so the public can know. But then after the signs were put up, not once but twice, they mysteriously got taken down. They've been down for the last week on the upper end and yesterday it got took, took down on the lower end. Just, the signs are just gone, that, that there's a stipulation, there's a trial today of, or hearing about this today. That's weird as well. I just don't, I think things are being pushed through, that need to be more slowed down and more considered. Yes, we do have five liquor stores in Mabelton now. We have three, his store was less than three miles away, as it is now. And I wanted to show, whether it's here nor there, his current location, he's recently added the big package words up there. I mean, to me, the pretty, uh, prohibition liquor sign was pretty and it was pink and, but now we have in big letters, package across there. I don't know if that's going to happen in Mabelton, but in my heart, I have had a concern about this since day one that, and I, I know this sounds silly and I'm sorry, but for some reason, it's on my heart about the children's safety. I know the, the liquor board said that they couldn't stop it because the fact that the martial arts studio is not considered a school, even in the Primrose Learning Center, Learning Center is not, is too far away. But this is a highly concentrated children's activity center here. We have a martial arts studio that has students here from five to seven and we have the Primrose letting out about the same time. All these children are conversing on this shopping center. And no, I'm not worried about people that haven't bought alcohol harming the children in any other way, other than the fact, children are, have to be closely monitored and watched. And sometimes if you've been in that shopping center, they get away from their parents and they get away. That's a very congested area. And I, I am very concerned that you put another occupancy, five to seven, right between the martial arts studio and the, and the grocery store and you have a concentration of children. And now they're not, you're adding another five to seven heavy occupancy there, that it leaves one more opportunity for a child to be injured. And, and I am not saying in any way that everybody that buys a bottle of liquor is under the influence. Please don't miss, I know that never, but if it only happens once, somebody comes in there under the influence to purchase liquor, then that's putting a child at risk and I just, I want to clear my conscience that I've done everything I can to, to let everyone know of the exposures here and to just take that into consideration. I have talked with the, the dental office next door and I'm not sure, I've asked everyone to contact your commissioners, you know if you've gotten the emails or not. I, I don't have any way of knowing that, but there is opposition out there and I'm sorry they couldn't make it today, but one of them was a doctor that she's in New York. She couldn't be here today to speak. And one of them is a lawyer that couldn't get off of work today. So, there is opposition out there, is all I'm saying. So, I just wish you to kindly consider all these things before making the choice to remove that stipulation. And e- even though this individual has a beautiful store, once a liquor store has been, that stipulation's re- once a liquor store has been, that stipulation is removed, I do understand that they'll have to, another liquor store would have to come in and get their license again, but still, it's opening that door for future liquor stores that may or may not be as nice as his store is. So I just wanted to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak in opposition? There are two minutes left. Okay, seeing none, John, what is staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board approve their request, subject to allowance of one liquor store only on the entire property, and number two, all previous conditions to remain in effect, if not in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John, if you can just kind of help us with a few things, some history on the site. There was mention, and in my research, I discovered, or researched, that there was a stipulation from 2003 that reads that a liquor store is prohibited. I'm sure you were around in 2003, or maybe even if you can recall to your memory. I don't know if that was added with the hopes of protection, or with the purpose of protecting the community, because it was kind of being developed at that time, or if there was opposition at the time, but any history on that that you can share would be appreciated.
Okay, the original property was rezoned in 2003 for a shopping center, which includes the Publix, the closed, the daycare, the drugstore, and some other things on the property. And the property is subject to three different zoning stipulation letters. It's got two from the applicant, one from April 15th, one from April 16th, and then also a letter from Mick from April 16th, I believe. And the Mick letter from April 16th does not prohibit a liquor store, but it's a letter that John Moore submitted on the 16th where it's prohibited. And I believe he submitted that at that time to make District Commissioner Thompson happy with the prohibited uses, just to ensure that the shopping center would remain a high-end, good-looking shopping center to the future.
Okay, all right, thanks. And also, with respect to the signs, there was comments made in terms of the distance of the signs, and my understanding, it has to be 500 feet along the frontage?
That's correct, there has to be a sign every 500 feet, so they are spaced far apart.
Okay, and if you can also address the comment regarding just having the stipulation amendment on the sign versus a little bit more detail regarding the request? What's the procedure there?
The procedure is, we just put generic what they wanted on the property. It's either going to be a site plan amendment, a stipulation amendment, or a site plan and stipulation amendment. If the public needs additional information, they can call the number on the sign. They can go to the county website, or they can come into our office to find out what the details are.
Okay, okay, thanks.
John, do you have a record of the mailings for the 1,000 feet?
Yes, the mailings were done.
They were, okay. And was it reported that the signs were down last week?
Yes, and we had him put the signs back up whenever they were down. They were down a couple different times.
Okay.
Yeah, they were down at least two to three times. And with the exception of this last time, I don't know if there was enough time to go out and put the sign out, but they've been there.
They've been there.
Yeah, at least for the last month or so. All right. Well, this one is definitely a tough one, because there's been support for this application, and there's been opposition for this application. So, I find myself in a position where I'm asked to split the baby, which is always uncomfortable, because there's one side that's going to be happy with you, and there's the other side that's not going to be happy with you. But I'd like to thank the applicant for being with us, and, you know, our apologies for the oversight in missing that stipulation was attached, and those are conversations we can have internally to ensure that something like that is not missed in the future. But I appreciate the, those who have voiced your support, and those who have voiced your opposition today, as well as your involvement in the zoning process. Mr. Bowman initially appeared before the Board of Commissioners, as he indicated in December of 2022, for an alcohol appeal hearing. And at that time, the Board of Commissioners unanimously upheld the decision of the License Review Board to approve the applicant's alcohol beverage application. However, staff discovered in 2020, in May of 2023, that there was a condition on the property that prohibited alcohol sales at the plaza, which obviously brings the matter before us today. And in my research, the letter submitted by Kevin Moore dated April 16th, 2003, Kroger was the originally, original proposed supermarket with a fueling station. And as we know, the nature of a dual service of a supermarket and a gas station at the same site generally is more congested because of the fuel sales. There was a mention earlier also regarding traffic, increased traffic at the plaza. And I'd just like to note that for whatever business are, will lease the vacant suites, it will bring traffic. So whether this application is approved, and it's this applicant, traffic will come, or if there is another applicant to lease any of the vacant space, including the Out parcel, from which I understand may be a medical facility by the detention pond, so that will definitely bring additional traffic as well. But in 2003, there were 20 prohibited uses when the property was zoned. And waivers have not been granted for any of those uses, and none of them are currently, none of them currently exist at the plaza. But today, over two decades later, we are asked to consider the removal of the 20th, there were 20 prohibited uses, and the liquor store was the 20th prohibited use of the plaza, at the plaza. I will also footnote that Publix, which was shared earlier by the applicant, is in the adjacent suite, and was granted a waiver, and currently sells beer and wine, and also includes Sunday sales. There is concern from the opposition that the community has too many liquor stores. According to the survey that was submitted during the alcohol license review, the closest package store is owned by the applicant and is approximately 3.3 miles away in Smyrna. The other stores are greater than 3.3. I think there was reference to four miles. I Googled it last night, and that is an accurate statement or assessment, that they're greater than four miles away, and at least one crosses over onto the Fulton County line. Those who are in support of the application would like to see a quality retail business that is reflective of the community, and by someone that actually lives in the community. And based on the operations of the applicant's Smyrna location, I do believe that the business will be well-maintained, and not just by the applicant, but by the property management company of the plaza. And this is where it gets a little tough for me, because I have a group, again, that oppose the liquor store for reasons, and the email that it will increase crime, loitering, and things of that nature. But at the Publix Plaza, it is managed by a property management company. So unlike some of the other locations in Mableton, and I think of one in particular that I don't want to necessarily say and bring any negative attention to that business, but it is a standalone business, and they're left to their own devices with respect to how well the business is maintained, and how well the exterior of the building is maintained. But with this particular property, it is, it will be governed, at least the exterior, by the property management company that manages this plaza. There was a reference to Primrose School. Primrose is over 1,000 feet, which we discovered during the hearing, is 1,000 feet from the entrance of this proposed location, and it's on the opposite side of the plaza. And if you guys can draw your attention to the screens, it's right, right below or right near, well, closer to Buckner Road. Yeah, if you can move over to the right a little bit. Well, to the left is on the other side, yeah. Come back the other way, it's actually. Come back, back. This is the Publix Plaza, but the Primrose is 1,000 feet from the entrance of that store. In staff recommendations, it was noted that staff approves the application, which I will uphold with staff's recommendation that the condition is removed for the applicant, and for the applicant only. Future tenants at the plaza must come before the Board of Commissioners with an OB item to have the liquor store prohibited use considered for removal. And I also like to add an additional condition, that there to be no window decals at the location. And that concludes my motion.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner, did you add a stipulation that this would be the only package or liquor store on the property?
John included that in his.
Okay, so we don't.
John included that in his comments.
Okay, so you're incorporating that as part of staff comments, okay.
And all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Thank you.
Okay, second. All right, any other comments or questions? Call the question. The vote passes 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is other business item number 29 of 2023, which is to consider a reduction of required minimum lot size from 20,000 square feet to 15,974 square feet, and a rear setback variance from 35 feet to 20 feet for Turn Construction LLC. The property is located at the northeast intersection of Atlanta Road and Peach Lane, in landlot 748 of the 17th District. Is the applicant present? The director of the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 29? Nope, the director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward, be sworn in?
And John, I was inclined to move this to consent earlier, but...
What happened?
Well, I just, I needed confirmation that there was no opposition, and was still waiting for a little bit of confirmation on that. There isn't any opposition. Yeah, there's really only one stipulation I wanted to add, so I can, if you're, if you're okay with it, I would like to move forward with a motion for an approval with a stipulation added, but want to ask you about that stipulation. Sure. It's a really simple one. Considering this is the combination of two property lots for a new site plan, I just want that site plan to come back for commissioner approval, site plan approval. Final site plan approval by district commissioner. Are you comfortable with that as a stipulation?
Can you say it again? Help, first of all, hello.
Hi. Yes, please, in your name.
Hello, I'm Melody Tufts with Turn Construction. I am a 25-year resident of Cobb County, and also a developer in Cobb County. But what was your question?
Yeah, I needed confirmation that this was as simple of a case as I thought it was, and I did receive that confirmation. So I'm inclined to move forward with a motion to approve. I just want to add one stipulation, and that is that the final site plan be approved by the district commissioner, if you're agreeable to that.
Of course.
All right.
Yeah, this process would enable us to approve it without you having to go through a full presentation and deliberations.
I understand it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And are the commissioners agreeable? Yeah. John, would you like to make a recommendation?
Sure.
Staff recommendation?
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board approve the request, subject to approval of lot size to 15,974 square feet, with a commensurate reduction of lot size consistent with any property acquired by Cobb DOT, approval of the requested rear setback variance to 20 feet, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet, Fire Department comments contained in the other business packet, Site Planner Review comments contained in the other business packet, and the district commissioner to approve the final site plan.
Thank you, John. I will make a motion now.
Okay.
Motion to approve OB 29 with the, with all staff comments and recommendations as written, inclusive of a new stipulation to have the district commissioner approve the final site plan. Thank you.
All right, any comments or questions? Hearing done, I'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0, commissioners. I believe this is.
Thank you.
We had, now we have to vote on the matter itself, or does this not get added to consent that we already approved?
It could just be approved. Since that vote has already taken place, and now we're adding something on later, I'd prefer if we had, it'd be approved.
Yeah, I did a motion to approve it.
Oh, it was just approved, it was not added.
Okay, oh, just approve it without a hearing. Okay, thank you. Oh, I appreciate you bearing with us with that motion. I believe this is the last matter on our agenda to address for today, John. Great, with that, our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.